Special meeting at exactly 5:30. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Dobie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nefolda.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
So this is a public hearing. Uh, city attorney, do you need to read something or is it?
No, not at this time. You can just go ahead and call the items.
Okay, fantastic. Alrighty, so it's resolution number 2023-20, overruling the Orange County Airport and Use Commission inconsistency determination for the city's sixth cycle housing element. Uh, can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to be turning it over to Director Noda to do a presentation. A lot of this information you'll have seen before with, uh, the addition of a few items, uh, roughly action that's been taken by, uh, ALUC and then also a letter received by the city from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Noda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I'm going to lead you through a PowerPoint presentation. Um, please, again, if you want to, you could stop me during the presentation for questions. I also have right next to me our consultant Nicole Kreis- Christ of Terra Nova. So again, um, let me lead you through this. Uh, again, like, uh, City Manager Simmons stated, uh, a lot of this information, uh, was said before, but again, I will go over it. And again, if you have any questions, just give, raise your hand or stop me. If it can move. There we go. Alright, background, a little background timeline here. On February 21st of this year, 23, the city council adopted the housing element. Um, also on that same day, the city council adopted resolution 23 dash 04 notifying the Airport Land Use Commission, um, we know them as ALUC, uh, with an intent to overrule their decision. On May 20, on May 1st, the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, notified that the city and the housing element complied with state law. So, uh, we commonly refer to that as, uh, we have a, a complete or certified housing element. And then on July 17th, the city council conducted a study session. Uh, the council continued the public hearing to the regular August 21st meeting. On August 21st, uh, study session was, uh, again provided and at the same night, council considered adoption of a resolution overruling ALUC's, uh, determination, but the resolution failed because it did not obtain the required four-fifth vote. On September 21st, uh, the ALUC board met and held a meeting to determine which they had three different approaches, uh, to take in reviewing projects in Los Alamos, and they ultimately voted to maintain review authority for, uh, three sites on our inventory site. We know them as Site 6, Site 7, and Site 10. And then HCD thereafter in October, um, sent the city a letter, um, asking what is the city's, um, next step regarding the approved housing element. Alright, why did, um, ALUC, um, what are ALUC's findings? ALUC found the housing element, the city's housing element inconsistent because Site 6, which is, uh, the address is 4665 Lamson, and Site 10, which is 5030 to 5084 Catella Avenue, are located within the 60 to 65 dB a noise contour of the Joint Forces Training Base. And Site 7, which is known as Laurel Park, is adjacent to the aircraft safety zone and under the flight path. So again, some, um, information, background information on noise, basic noise information. The most common noise measurement for planning purposes is known as, uh, community noise equivalent level or CNL, which is an average noise level over a 24-hour, um, 24-hour span. And noise can come from anything, from stationary or mobile. Um, so like stationary stuff is air conditioners or a pool, um, equipment. And mobile, of course, is traffic. So some example of some common, um, sound measurements are two people talking is measured at 60 dB a. A blender, a household blender is considered at 80, between 80 to 90 dB a, and a leaf floor is 110 dB a. So the noise level in ALUC in Los Alamos, so ALUC considered, um, 60 to 65 dB a to be conditionally consistent for residential units because there's a risk that interior noise level might not be reduced to 45. Uh, I want to point out that the Los Alamos General Plan does have a standard of 65 dB a exterior for residential and requires a 45 dB a for interior noise. So again, it is in the general plan that if a building is constructed in Los Alamos, that builder has to have the required 45 dB a sound level when it's inside, uh, again, the noise level inside. So again, here's a map, right, uh, Site 6 and Site 10, which, uh, which are within the ALUC 60 to 65 dB a zone. Now, it's really hard and I think you have a pack in front of you, but it's approximately, it's, it pointed out in red dots. My clicker works. But anyway, there's, there's red dots there. So again, Site 10 is surrounded by, uh, we want to point out that Site 10 is surrounded by existing development, including existing homes, and that both sites, Site 6 and Site 10, are on the outer edge of the boundary closer to the 60 dB a sound level. Alright, city noise. So again, some comparison on, um, noise, uh, that is typical standard noise that you probably, uh, face, um, in the city. Um, so again, Los Alamos Boulevard, the segment between Farquhar Avenue, Orange Avenue, was measured at 76. Catella Avenue from I-605 to Los Alamos Boulevard, which is literally right outside, is measured at 78.3. And Cerritos Avenue from Los Alamos Boulevard to Bloomfield was measured at 71.1. So when a developer comes in and puts in a development and builds something, again, it's in our general plan to have a 45 interior noise. So how do you reduce noise? There are many ways to do that. You could put walls, uh, not, I'm not talking about wa- walls of a house, but also like a backyard wall or a, uh, community wall. That can reduce noise levels of up to five dB a's. Um, standard building construction, again, can go anywhere from 10 to 20. Noise can also be decreased by, uh, other construction, like, uh, double pane windows. You could add, um, landscaping, again. So there's many different ways to reduce the interior noise level of a development. So we mentioned, but which was Site 6 and Site 10, which was, uh, according to ALUC, uh, had some noise inconsistency. Site 7, which is Laurel Park, uh, they said was, uh, inconsistent because of safety, because it was in the flight path of the Joint Forces Training Base. It shows here that Site 7 is not in the flight path of the Joint Forces Training Base. Um, again, um, it's within the airport boundary, but again, it is not under the flight path of the Joint Forces Training Base. Inconsistency determination, um, there are several cities that are surrounded by an airport, not necessarily Joint Forces Training Base. Cities such as Newport Beach, Irvine, Costa Mesa, and Seal Beach, they have all completed their overrule. And then some cities fared better and received notification that it had been found consistent, and Cypress is one of those cities. Cypress, again, is our next-door neighbor. So ALUC, comparison between Cypress and Los Alamos. There's a map here, that map to your left there is actually from the Cypress's general plan. Uh, the bottom right here, again, my, uh, can't see, but it's the bottom left corner here, uh, that is, uh, Catella Avenue and is right down, you can see a dark brown spot. That's that new development going in there, right in front of the racetrack. Okay, uh, that is down the street from Laurel Park. And if you look to the map to the right, and we put dots there, so Laurel Park is a red dot, while that development right in front of the racetrack is the green dot. And so that green dot is found in the flight path of the Joint Forces Training Base. So Cypress, in their housing element, overall, has one site that is within the 60 dB a sound in contour and one site within the Joint Forces Training Base flight path. Yet ALUC has determined that Cypress's housing element was found consistent. While in Los Alamos, we do have three sites within the 60 dB a sound contour and no sites within the flight path, yet Los Alamos housing element was found inconsistent. So I just want to point that out because even within their own internal determination, I feel that, uh, we feel that ALUC has some inconsistency in their own findings. So what happens next? Alright, so we did receive a letter from HCD in October, as I mentioned before, asking what the city's next course of action was. So if you look all aware, is that letter was called a letter of inquiry. So there's two steps that we can go from there, right? So the first step, of course, is the top big box there, which is an ALUC overrule, which again, requires a four-fifth vote from council. If we do not get that ALUC overrule, then, um, we'd have to basically, um, amend our housing element and notify HCD within a certain time period. And once we do that, then there's two ways we can go. We could have HCD decertify our housing element, thus opening the city to possible, uh, builder's remedy. Or we basically start from scratch in identifying. So Site, was it, uh, trying to, 6, is it? So the three sites that were in question, Site 6, 10, and 7, has a total of 396 units identified in our housing inventory. So if we had to start from basically scratch, we'd have to identify where we're going to place those 396 units in the city. And then, um, out of that, uh, while we go through the process, because it is a timely process, if we were to start again from scratch, we'd have to, um, what do you think, Nicole? Probably like a, at least a minimum? Six-month process, minimum? And that's pretty fast, right? It's probably closer to eight-month process. And during that time, if HCD is not satisfied with the pace that we are going to, um, redo our housing element, they can get the Attorney General involved, right? Uh, but at the end of the day, we will need to go and resubmit our housing element, go through the process, um, again, go through city council, go through our planning commission, go through, uh, public hearing and all that stuff. And again, submit to HCD with final approval. Again, uh, it is a minimum six-month process, but I, I feel like it's probably closer to eight, nine-month process. So consequences, if we don't do it here, again, is HCD will or could decertify the housing element because arena number cannot be achieved. If HCD does decertify the element, uh, again, like I mentioned, 396 units will have to, um, be located elsewhere in the city. Uh, Los Alamos loses its ability to apply for parks and road improvement funds. Los Alamos loses its ability to apply standards to affordable housing projects under the builder's remedy, which is a provision of state law. And ultimately, there's a possibility, a strong possibility of loss of local control where state law allows HCD to take over, uh, Los Alamos Planning Department approved projects at its discretion. So that is the end of our presentation. Um, we are here for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Start up here. Do we have any questions? From the dives?
Um, yeah, I have a few questions. So I understand in the previous presentation, as of August 21st, there was a lot of references to the anonymous flyers that had went out to community members as well as Los Alamos' business owners, where it stated that, um, homeowner's rights would be taken away. Um, they wouldn't be able to modify an awning or gazebo, which was then cooperated by staff. My issue is that information ended up to be false, as is the September 21st ALUC letter. So my concern is going forward that any information that is unfounded, that is false, not be presented to council, let alone the public, unless it is found to be accurate. Because now it's not even in the presentation, although it was initially where there was a lot of scare tactics used. So my question is, what is going to be done for, going forward, so that does not occur?
So councilwoman, maybe I can take that one. Uh, the documents that you're referring to were part, or were submitted to the city clerk's office as part of a public hearing and therefore are, were required to actually include them as part of the staff report. Um, with regards to staff collaborating in those statements, um, I'll, I'll draw your attention to the section within the staff report that says that ALUC itself considered three options in terms of what exactly they were going to do. Uh, one of those options was to do nothing. One of those options was to look solely at the sites that, um, they had found inconsistencies in. And then the third option was to require the full-scale review that, um, happened to highlight it at the previous meeting. And yes, it was the worst-case scenario, but it was still an option for ALUC to actually go down that road.
Okay, but according to the YouTube, it was specifically stated, ALUC would need to review every permit proposed to the city that includes home additions and major commercial projects. That's not indicating that there's any other options available. That's not indicating anything else. It's clearly stating that this is what will occur, that they will take our local control. And I'm just saying, going forward, that if there are options available, I would want a comprehensive discussion about it and not just taking in certain aspects of what was presented.
I think that's a fair statement. And again, uh, councilwoman, I think the, the issue at hand here is that this is a largely untested area of law. And so a strict reading of the, the way that the law is written does say that they can have, that they have the ability to take all of those into, into account. It's just in this case, they chose not to. And we were approving to any of the conversations that they were having internally as to what exactly their hopes were going to be or what direction they were going to take.
Okay. Additionally, I understand in respect to attachments 12 and 13, which is dated September 21st and September 26th, when were those copies provided to the council for review? Because now we're in December.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Um, in respect to attachments 12 and 13, the letters dated September 21st, 2023, and September 26th, 2023 from the ALUC, when were city council members provided that information?
I don't think I'd be able to tell you exact dates of when they were shipped to you. I do know that when ALUC sent them, they did CC them to all the council members.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Murphy, did you have additional questions?
Oh, yeah. In consideration of Site 6, I understand that there is a potential applicant for the site development of Site 6, 4665 Lamson. Um, are there any steps that are being taken to make sure that the potential applicant or developer mitigates any of the noise concerns presented in the ALUC findings?
They would be required to as a function of our building code, yes.
Okay, and it will be enforced by the city of Los Alamos?
Yes, uh, we would have to follow it. It is, uh, part of our adopted code. It also resides within our general plan.
Okay, will there be any steps to, I guess, enforce maybe a longer setback since there is an issue of noise concerns concerning the runway for Joint Forces Training Base?
That would be something that we worked out during the, um, the review of the, the environmental review of the application, when that takes place. Um, the interesting part about, and I know that we're focusing on one site as opposed to the housing element, but...
Oh, no, I have other, I have other.
Yeah, uh, no, and I'm just saying that in general, whenever a, a development is proposed within the city, through the course of looking at the environmental impacts, uh, the city obviously has the power, if we're the ones doing the, um, the review and the, um, bringing those items up for the, both the planning commission and the, um, the city council consider, where you will have the option to actually say, "We would like these type of improvements made in order to get to a, um, uh, an approval at the end of the day." So I think that it, there's a, I'll, I'll call it an avenue for the city council to, and the planning commission, to really talk about what exactly the impacts would be of a specific project, just by the nature of how the development process works.
And that'll all be presented to the community as well as the city council to make sure that they're aware and there's transparency.
Right. And this, this project would fall under one of the things that we put in place, uh, called the Projects of Significance. And so essentially, what would happen is, in the event that we have a complete document and a, a, um, an application that has all the pieces, we would then, once we finish the environmental review, be loading all of that to our website, pictures, schematics, densities, what have you, uh, a brief outline of what exactly is being proposed on-site, links to the plans and everything. And then also onsite, there would also be a billboard that would be erected that would have renderings of what exactly the site would look like, along with a QR code that would take everyone back to the landing page on our website in order to be able to make sure that everyone has all the information they need about the site. And also, I'm sorry, also a contact for the, um, the planning firm within the, that the developer is using in order to allow people to ask questions.
And is that when the applicant is actually approved, or is that when there's a potential applicant?
Prior to approval, long before approval. This, what happened in our, in the schematics of how we have set this up, it's, once we've, uh, started the environmental review, so the very first step of processing plans, uh, we would be taking those plans and shipping them out to a third-party vendor, um, just to be able to say that we had an independent review that happened outside of the building. Once that happens, it opens up a 45-day, uh, comment period for the public. And our goal would be to have all of the information on the website before the launch of that 45-day period. That way, there is no questions about what actually has been submitted, there is no question about what exactly is entailed within the plans. Now, during that period, the developer can go back and review and revise and all those kind of things, but we, again, would be able to reload those new, I'll call them new documents or new schematics to the website.
And is there a current potential applicant for the site development, specifically Site 6?
Yes.
There is. And is there any schematics that's been presented?
Yes, they've actually, in the weekly that came, uh, to all of you last week, mentioned that they have submitted plans at this point.
Okay, and when will that be presented to the public?
Once we've committed the, in, the initial environmental review.
And how long is that?
It's probably going to take anywhere between 16 to 90 days.
And during that time, the community would be made aware and there'd be outreach so that they're made aware of all the steps going forward.
Exactly. And the, and the hope here is, again, is to put the, the presentation or to put plans within a digestible format. And so obviously, just linking a, a package, I don't know if it does anyone any good. We, we would definitely do that, but then also break up the various schematics and then maybe a summary of what actually is being proposed for the site, uh, just because it's easier for everyone to find information in that format.
Okay, because my concern is, you know, when I first got onto the city council, there was quite a number of community members who were here, who were requesting a 90-day continuance because they didn't have sufficient outreach and information. So I just want to make sure if we're going forward or if this does go forward, that there is significant community outreach and they're aware of the steps that are being taken at any of the number sites that the Los Alamos decides to, to develop.
This, and I will say this, and again, I, I will have to do some fact-checking, but I do believe our Projects of Significance ordinance is actually the most robust, um, outreach program that most cities do for this type of work. It expands the range of, uh, where exactly we're giving notices. It requires us to actually make notice to neighboring cities and jurisdictions so they can put that information out on their websites and link back to our own sites, not to mention the fact that anyone who drives past the site has the ability to use the QR code or use the phone number in order to be able to get the information that they need.
Okay, I remember from the last time when I reviewed the YouTube recently, it was only three, um, three times that there was community outreach, so I'm just hoping it'd be more significant because it wouldn't require so many community members to be present at the meeting stating that they wanted the 90-day continuance because they didn't have sufficient information. So I'm just saying, because of that, and we are here for the community, that we do take that into context when the next time we go forward.
I, I agree, and I think that, um, it was shared by, uh, that, that motion passed unanimously, so that definitely is the direction that we'll be going in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a, a statement. Mr. Noda, thank you for your presentation. Um, I'd like to start by noting that the Airport Land Use Commission met on September 21st, 2023, to discuss Los Alamos. In ALUC's letter to the city dated September 26th, 2023, it states that the commission voted to move forward with what they referred to as Option 2, Mr. Noda referenced earlier. In part, Option 2 states, quote, "The ALUC requires that the city submit the following discretionary actions related to the three sites listed below to the ALUC for consistency review with the ALU for JFTB Los Alamos." It goes on to list Sites 6, 7, and 10, then concludes with the list of documents that would also need to be submitted. Page 146 of tonight's staff report shows a map of Site 7 near the Joint Forces Training Base flight path. My concern is not so much with this particular location, but with the noise concerns of Site 6 and Site 10. The Airport Land Use Commission's letter dated March 28th, 2023, states, quote, "The ALUC inconsistency determination was based in part on the ALU Section 2.1.1, which states, 'Aircraft noise emanating from airports may be incompatible with the general welfare of the inhabitants within the vicinity of the airport,' and partly on general land-use policies in Section 3.2.1, which states that within the boundaries of the ALU, the land use may be found to be inconsistent with the ALU, which places people so that they are adversely affected by aircraft noise. ALUC has not stated that Sites 6, 7, or 10 cannot be developed, however, there are public safety concerns. I believe the city and ALUC can come up with a plan to mitigate the public safety concerns to allow for development. I agree that the plans for these three sites need to be submitted to ALUC to ensure public safety near the Joint Forces Training Base."
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, um, at this time, I will open the public hearing for public comments. I will request that everyone fill out a speaker card and/or sign in on the sheet that's on the podium. And anyone in the audience can come forward and speak on this item only, which means the Lamson project specifically is not on the agenda tonight. And I understand the site is involved in the ALUC overrule, however, comments should address the ALUC overrule specifically. So if we can keep our comments to the overrule specifically and not a site, that would be outstanding. If it becomes site-specific, we'll have to stop the comments and move on to, uh, another speaker because it is not an agendized item and we cannot delve into unagendized items. So we will have three minutes per speaker, and it looks like my first speaker is Ashley Nichols.
So yeah, my name is, um, Ashley Nichols, and I'm a resident of Pine Street, Los Alamos. Um, DM me, Dobie, and distinguished council members. Uh, my comments are mostly for Councilwoman Hibbard. Uh, Councilwoman Hibbard, um, you and I spoke over the phone after the last vote to overrule the ALUC decision. At the time, you told me you were working with ALUC to try to have them only request planning review of the three proposed housing sites. That was evidently their decision, but now it's come to my understanding that they have the power to change that decision at any time. Uh, originally, after our discussion, I felt reasonably comfortable that our rights as local residents had not been diminished, but now I realize that's just a thin veil to placate residents that are concerned with the ALUC decision. And it's still not in the best interest of Los Alame- Los Alamos residents. If they have the right, they can do what they want, when they want. The other thing you told me that, uh, no one had been able to prove to you that our city would lose access to any state funding sources or face any penalties if the state decertified our housing element. I took it upon myself to read the letter that the HCD sent to the city that clearly outlines several funding sources that our city will lose access to. It also identifies penalties of a minimum of $10,000 per month or up to $100,000 per month if they decertify our approved housing element. I also cannot see how this is in the best interest of Los Alamos residents. I know the city has spent several years and likely hundreds of thousands of dollars to get our housing element approved. I ask you and the other council members not to flush all that money away. So once again, I ask you tonight, please put the interests of our city and residents first and not the interests of other people or groups that are not residents of Los Alamos. I'm a resident of the city and in your district, I'm asking you to make the right decision if you to choose to protect us by voting to overrule the ALUC decision. I'd like to thank you all for your time and this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and just in the interest of expedience, if you know that you would like to come up when you see someone going to sit down, please feel free to just make your way on up. Do we have any other speakers? Anyone else wanting to speak? Whoever's up first can go. We, no particular order. I don't have numbers to give y'all, so you just come on down. I don't have numbers to give y'all, so you just come on down.
I didn't really come prepared to speak, but I would just say a few things real quick. When you think about communicating to the community, think about communicating a hundred percent of what is a possibility if we don't do, as a city, what we need to do. So it's not just telling our member, our neighbors about a potential site. It's about Los Alamos residents knowing that if we don't build at certain sites, this is what it means to those of us who are living off of Catella and Los Alamos Boulevard. I have a feeling that when you're talking about communicating with the community, it's not the Los Al community, because most people don't realize what we could lose. And I just want to thank the rest of you for just being amazing and thinking about our city and thinking about us. Now, about noise, I live, my backyard is up against the airport. I love living here. I get more noise from traffic on Catella Boulevard than I ever do from the airport. And certain sites would, and not building on certain sites will bring more noise. That's what you should be worried about, your city, your residents here in Los Al. Thank you.
Next? Okay.
We've got some handles.
Okay.
There's a map. And the printout part is the ALEC guidelines. Take the time to read those, even if you have to take a recess. You should take the time, because this is from ALEC, except for the map, which is a Thomas Guide map that I managed to find in my closet. So anyway. And I'll talk just a little bit about noise real quick. As far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, well, my name is Art DeBolt. I'm at the, I'm on Denwood Avenue in Los Alamos. With respect to noise, you'll see a table, which is on the first page stapled together. This is from ALEC. Picture's worth a thousand words. In this case, it's worth probably twenty words. But the bottom line is, is that for residential construction, if you follow the graph, this is a follow-up to what Councilmember Hibbard talked about. She read the first few sentences of two-point-one-one of ALEC guidelines, which is your second page, but this map says it all. If you're in the sixty to sixty-five CNAL zone, CNAL zone, you are conditionally consistent, provided you mitigate the noise down to, or attenuate it down to forty-five decibels, which we do. It's in our code. That is a moot point. ALEC is not following their own guidelines. This is their guidelines, and they've chosen not to follow it. Okay? And as far as I'm concerned, why? I don't know why. The broad statement that they, that they make, that Councilmember Hubbard talked about is there, but this table issues you specific information about it. With respect to safety, I've included a map, a Thomas Guide map from probably twenty-five years ago, I found in my closet, which clearly shows the, the runways. And I've highlighted in blue, or at least circled Arbor Park, okay, and where Site Six would be, the other site up by Laurel, and the other one, I didn't, couldn't remember where it was, so I didn't mark it. It's really kind of moot because you got Cypress approved right across the street, which makes no sense. Another inconsistency with ALEC. But with respect to safety, in the guidelines that I gave you, you can go to safety, and it talks about the crash zone, CZ, in the airport, or the protection zone, crash protection zone, all of which in nineteen ninety-four was limited to within the confines of the base, not outside the base, not at Laurel, not along Catella, on the base. That was nineteen ninety-four. That's in their guidelines, okay? We have a more recent one, two thousand and two, which is even more, I'll say, favorable to development outside the base. And if you want to look at safety, I mean, there, there, I mean, it, it's simply, I, if you look at the map of the airfield, the crash zones are on the base. For a plane to, any crash, anything to occur on any of the sites is, I would say, a total aberration, if not impossible. As far as the flight path that they're talking about along Catella, I remember when they enacted that. We, we had raised cane with the base over the helicopters flying over our properties.
Need your final thought, Mr. DeBolt.
Fine, the, the, well, anyway, they ended up setting a helicopter fly zone. This is a flight path, it's for helicopters, not aircraft, unless you count the glider that flies over and the tow plane every now and then. So, you know, you have enough information. I don't know what the, you know, ALEC has been inconsistent in their inconsistent findings, their, their application of it. This begs overruling. This begs, even, even beyond overruling, this, this begs some type of action against ALEC, that comes from the county supervisors, for ignoring their own guidelines. You have their guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. DeBolt. I'm not trying to call anybody out, but I figured if I make eye contact, you'll feel like I'm gonna get up.
Good evening. The time limit imposed on speakers creates insufficient opportunity for the public to be able to present cogent comments, which will result in a deficient public record. I'm providing the city clerk with a flash drive containing public records described in this memorandum. The flash drive has been provided to the News Enterprise to allow public access to the documents. The documents were assembled pursuant to the public notice hearing published in the News Enterprise on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, which contains the following statement. "This is a public hearing, and you're invited to attend and comment on the proposed items described above. If you challenge any action related to the proposed item above, you may have, may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or written correspondence delivered to the city council at or before the public hearing. For your information, special meetings normally do not involve publishing a notice in a newspaper. This notice suggests that the city staff or others contemplate litigation involving the vote to override the Airport Land Use Commission. The text of the public notion notice is deficient in that it fails to identify the specific resolution by date and number, making the public notice vague and unintelligible. The notice states that the council will reconsider a finding that the housing element was consistent with the purposes of the State Aeronautics Act. The notice also states that the council will reconsider a finding that the housing element was inconsistent with the Airport Land Use Environments Plan. Asking the council to vote on two conflicting findings in one resolution creates a false impression that there is a conflict between state laws. The resolution prepared for tonight's meeting perpetuates this conflict and false narrative. There are three issues that the staff report fails to address. One, the city staff provides no analysis of the Airport Land Use Commission's finding that the housing element created housing zones that concentrate people near the military airbase, which is inconsistent with safe operations of the base and public safety. Instead, the staff focuses on technical data for sound and height, ignoring the fundamental purpose of protecting public safety. The city staff failed to discuss the gravy units built into the housing element by the consultant Terranova, which were designed to present, prevent the housing element from becoming inconsistent. Terranova created a total of twelve-hundred-and-ninety-five housing units. These units exceed the state minimum by seven-hundred, of seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine units by sixty-eight percent. The staff failed to address the second option to submit the three-site plans identified as having safety concerns to ALEC for review and remediation measures. Instead, the staff presents one option, override, thereby creating bias in the presentation. The public records contained on the flash drive provide any potential litigants with factual basis for finding that the decision not to override ALEC's finding of inconsistency was not arbitrary. I request my written comments be attached to the minutes of the meeting, along with a link to the public records I'm providing to the city clerk on the flash drive. A list of the documents is attached and incorporated herein by reference."
Anybody else?
Want to go first?
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Christine North Wetson. I lived in Parkwood. The base is my backyard. As far as noise go, there is noise, and I agree that it's not overwhelming, unless there's an airshow. The biggest problem that we have on Lamson and the other sites is that housing, residential, high-density housing should not be zoned adjacent to a military base. And the rest of all of this presentation talks all around that, and you talk about noise mitigation. The fact is, military statistics have developed a plan for projects adjacent to the airport. It was never to be zoned R-three for high-density residential housing projects, which is what Lamson developers have submitted, which has already been approved by a concession letter. I don't know about the other projects, whether they are in a process of being developed, but I do know about Lamson, and I do know that Parkwood would not be approved by ALEC now, but it was already built before the commission was looking at the adjacent projects around the land. It wasn't commissioned. I cannot believe that we, Mr. Noda talks about the, the sites and were the developer bypass. There were twelve-hundred sites approved, not seven-hundred-plus, but twelve-hundred gravy units that are available. So I don't want to hear personally about the project bypass. The developers are going to take control. The issue here is safety around the airport. That is the issue. That is what ALEC, ALEC made their findings on, and I don't care if they're consistent on every single city. I know a military base has activities with helicopters, small jets, big jets, and they're training pilots. It's not a public airport, and the accident rate around military bases is much higher than public airports. So it was never meant to be R-three. It was zoned for commercial or retail use because it's not packed with people who be, would be casualties, let alone when there's a big accident, all your property values will crash. So we really don't need that. Thank you. Thank you.
Seems like I'm living in this room almost a monthly basis. So my question is, what changed from the previous vote not to overrule ALEC? Is it personal self-benefit, or is it really concern for the city? Is it concern for the safety of the residents? What is missing here? There's obviously some stuff going on behind the scenes that you're not sharing with the public, because we all know, and you've agreed, the lack of transparency. Tricia made a good point. Be more open with the public. You failed miserably with the Lamson project. ALEC's military airport knowledge on people's safety far outweighs Los Alamos Planning Department and City Manager's knowledge, especially when government studies have proven and continue to admit there are serious concerns due to the lack of adequate pilot and flight training at military bases, resulting in high levels of accidents to their properties, be it the planes and/or buildings, and even deaths. One gentleman mentioned that it almost seemed impossible that we may have an accident. It just takes one. It could be you, it could be your family. One is too many. After attending the first high-density housing meeting plans in October of twenty-two, common sense concern for the public safety was not, and is not, the forefront of concern under the present city management's group here. Emails from the city seem to show that the Planning Department has relationships with Les Johnson, who's now working on the consult, with the consultants company. He was the previous, I believe, the city manager. And we're beginning to wonder that the developers, is there some backdoor agreements between you guys and the developers that you keep a secret from the public? Because there's a lot of hidden information that's not being shared and raising a lot of untrust and a lot of questions. This is not just about the safety. This is also how this is being handled, and the respect of the citizens is ignored? Any questions? Is politics above residents' concerns? We were assured by the Planning Department's public safety would be concerned. We're also concerned, we were assured, that please submit your concerns by email to the Planning Department. We want them for the ER study. Interesting enough, hundreds of concerned citizens emailed these in, but they were never given to the consulting company. Proof, an email from the consulting company, Terracotta, to Tom Oliver, asking if he had any comments. He said there were none. Lie. Lies continue to go forward from then on. I'm sorry, I have a few more things that have to be said.
Well, I need your final thoughts.
Not only were emails ignored, but it became apparent that their own agenda was to quickly overrule, or quickly rule, rezone the West End commercial property, from commercial property to residential, R-three dense residential housing. They were not even listening to the residents. You guys totally ignored it, and you dissed us. You didn't care. The city claims that the noise levels, if houses were built next to the base, are like forty-five decibels indoors. Well, why is nothing being said about outdoors? At what point are you guys going to come to reality and be upfront with people?
Okay, thank you.
For anybody that went to the airshow base, I and an engineer metered the sound metering of those planes.
Ma'am, what's your name?
My name is Helen.
Helen?
We metered, and it's
Thank you for your time.
Ninety-nine-point-five
Thank you for your
To a hundred-and-five decibels.
Thank you for your time, Helen.
That is outside. How do you talk to your neighbors? What's the hearing damage for the kids and the people living
Helen.
The residents?
Thank you for your time.
Three minutes is not enough time, as Carol mentioned. Out of respect, three of you council members
I gave you four.
Don't give you the respect, do not give respect to the citizens.
I gave you four.
Something to discuss
Thank you for your time.
And to improve upon.
If you plan to come up next, please start making your way.
Good evening, neighbors and city council. I haven't prepared anything. I haven't, but I agree with the man in the rear here with the blue shirt who studied everything about this. I live on the base. My house is backed into the base. The airplanes are coming and going, the helicopters, it's no problem. It's not bad. They could build something on the site. I think you should listen to the man and my wife. I think that's the right way to go, the ALEC. I think they're, those, I don't, I think that you should go ahead and, we're, we're dealing with all the development up on here, Catella, that's going on around the horse track, and it's overload, there's so much going on here. They're going to have to have something on that side over there. It's real quiet over there. We're putting up with a lot up in our town. I think you guys need to vote for what's good for this little Los Alamos. That Seal Beach down there, they're going to have to share in the misery, just like we're going to have to share in the misery of more buildings and more people. That's what I could tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. I've seen you jumping. Come on.
Hi, my name's Jean. I'm from Seal Beach. Seal Beach is a small city like yours. They're in a little bit of financial difficulty right now, so I don't know if your kind of, your city's kind of like that, but I just don't know if HCB, or the state, or whatever the other person is, they seem to be giving you a lot of threats, like they did Seal Beach. Seal Beach caved in. Seal Beach caved in. But, you know, if they're giving you, you're gonna have to pay $10,000 a month or whatever. I don't think you may have a lot of money. That if, I don't think a state would want you, a city, to go into bankruptcy within a year. I think that those tactics are not really upfront or true. Not that you want to be the test bed, but you just may. Because I don't think that they would charge you $10,000 a month if you said you're gonna stay with the ALUC decision or whatever. I think it's more of an ethical thing. I think it was an ethical thing in Seal Beach with those city council people and they, they weren't ethical. I think you guys have a choice right now, within the next whatever 10 minutes when you vote, to really look at your ethics and say, does this really need to happen? Would the state really come after me? Would the state really do all this bad stuff? I don't think they will because they would essentially ruin a small city. That's just my opinion and, you know, I think the safety issues. It's just too much development everywhere around here. And our quality of life will become like LA. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have anybody else that would like to come and speak or share? Nope. All right. Well, then I will close the public hearing for the public comments. And next is to request a motion.
I will make the motion to override the ALUC recommendation.
I'll second. Is that a roll call now?
Yes. The motion by Councilmember Hasselbrink, seconded by Councilmember Nofolda to move forward with staff's recommendation to affirm our resolution regarding the ALUC overrule. We'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Dobie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nofolda?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbard?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
May I make a statement, please? Okay. I would like to have my comments transcribed and entered into the minutes as a matter of public record. My voting decisions have been consistent with rational reasoning, based on relevant facts with factual premises and not through false, bias, misleading statements or presenting materials that omitted or were completely fabricated. My concerns have been and continue to be about health, safety, and noise concerns that could impact the quality of life for the community and that should be addressed before proceeding with any potential developments in the city of Los Alamos. I have a duty and responsibility as a council member for the city of Los Alamos and not the city of Cypress to establish policies and take measures to protect the city's health, safety, and welfare. As such, I believe it prudent to review not only the provided staff reports, but research, meet and talk with community members, have discussions with representatives from various outside agencies, such as the ALUC and HCD, while analyzing written materials relevant to this issue. I make my own decisions and I always have. My vote tonight is not to make findings that the general plan 2021 to 2029 housing element update is consistent with the purpose of the State Aeronautics Act. My decision is not without reason or consideration for the facts and circumstances. Today, I approve to overrule ALUC as all of my concerns have been addressed. I am confident in the experience and reputation of ALUC as they are the appropriate public agency that have been unbiased safety decisions as it pertains to concentrations on people in areas susceptible to aircraft accidents, specifically in military airport bases, such as the Joint Forces Training Base. But today, since my concerns have been addressed, I will approve to overrule the ALUC.
Just to confirm for the roll call vote, Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All righty. So now is it you, city attorney?
I believe that's it for the public hearing. Close it. And if there's no other item on the agenda, we adjourn the meeting.
All right. We will go ahead and call an end to this special meeting at 6:25. Thank y'all for coming. Have a beautiful evening.